For Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. And let's stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two on our agenda tonight is welcome and introductions. So do you want to start?
My name is Paul Fontno, recent appointment to the planning commission and just hope to be able to offer some extra insights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Bailey, planning commissioner.
And that's Stuart, planning commissioner. Beck Ashby, planning commissioner.
Tyler McCloskey, planning commissioner.
Joe Morrison, planning commissioner.
Jim Fisk, senior planner.
Josie Radamacher, assistant planner.
And welcome to you, Heidi. Um, so number three on our agenda tonight, agenda is audience comments and seeing the audience members. I guess there will be no comments.
Uh, we do have one person attending remotely. Uh, Crystal, if you have a comment, um, that's something not on the agenda, if you could raise your hand. Okay, she's not raising her hand.
Okay. So item four is approval of the minutes from December 6th of 2022.
I would move to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Alright. What is happening here? Uh, just one quick second. I'm just, is it this? Right here? No, revised. Oh, there we go. Then we had one thing. I still only have one thing. Go back to the other one. I think what was... Sorry, guys. I'm having some technical difficulties. The non revised. Wonder if it's this? Are you guys getting the whole packet? Oh, there we go. I got it. Perfect. Sorry. Okay. Uh, so I didn't know if I have business items. A is the discussion on LR 23 Plan 02-2023, the comprehensive plan amendments. Are you going to speak?
Uh, good evening, Jim Fisk, senior planner. Port Orchard Municipal 20.04 outlines the process to amend the city's adopted comprehensive plan. The city annually processes amendments both applicant initiated and initiated by the city. This year, the city initiated one comp plan amendment by the January 31st deadline, did not receive any other comprehensive, comprehensive plan amendment requests. The city initiated the amendment, uh, the city initiated amendment makes up the director's recommended comprehensive plan amendment docket. Specifically, the amendment seeks to redesignate properties along Meeline Road from commercial to low density residential. The area is predominantly developed with detached houses and land uses. The current designation of commercial and commercial mixed use zoning is problematic for current property owners as the existing uses and structures do not conform to the existing zoning. QMC 20.54 nonconformities provides limitations on nonconforming uses and structures and in some instances may even prohibit the redevelopment of a user structure in the event of destruction. The redesignation to residential would correct nonconforming issues, allowing property owners to make improvements outside the scope of maintenance to their homes or even in the event of destruction to, uh, in the event of destruction to rebuild their homes. Additionally, access to the properties likely reduces the feasibility or desirability of any commercial uses that may be permitted in the CMU district. Access is provided via Dogwood Road, a rural road via Sydney Road within Kitsap County approximately three quarters of a mile away. Infrastructure in the area is deficient to support commercial use and would likely require a significant financial investment. Staff intends to present the director's recommended comprehensive plan docket to the city council in February and ask the planning commission to hold a public hearing regarding the amendment at the March 7th meeting. And we can bring up some maps if you'd like to discuss it further.
Yes, please.
To begin the discussion, I would make a motion that the planning commission recommend that we hold a public hearing on this matter at our meeting in March.
I would second.
Can everybody see this? Okay.
These properties are located just south of the Lowe's on Sedgwick. Um, and as you can see from this map, uh, to access these properties, one would have to drive from the Sedgwick and Sydney intersection south to Dogwood, uh, travel east toward, uh, State Route 16 and then north, uh, back right behind the, the Lowe's store. There's really no other way to get to these properties as the properties develop just to the north, um, block access.
A question I have is where's the city boundary? Cause I know the city does not go all the way out to Dogwood.
On, on this map here that Josie's brought up, um, this would be the re-designated residential one, but where you see the colors, um, the solid polygons, that, that is all within the city, except that obviously the state, the state route is also in, uh, the city. Um, but essentially that south boundary of all those colored polygons, that is the city limit.
Okay. Another question I have is the, the staff report indicated that the city initiated this request. And my question is, are the residents in favor of this?
We have received some letters, um, expressing, uh, support of this. Uh, I think we have four, if I'm not mistaken, um, and we will, we will include those in the packet for the public hearing. Uh, obviously we're still collecting public comment, but, um, at this point, this would be the recommended, uh, docket.
Just the reason I asked that is there's an economic difference between having a property zone commercial is to having one zoned, um, residential. And I wanted to make sure that the, that the property owners were supportive of the change.
I, I think that most of this, um, is actually now driven by the, the residents in the area. In the past, I think there was some reluctance to go to residential. Um, but over the, the past decade or so, I think it's become apparent to the property owners that they have some challenges in maintaining the existing land uses because of the nonconforming issues. Um, so I think they also understand your concern. Um, but just given the infrastructure in the area, um, access to it, this area really probably should be residential instead of commercial.
Is there going to be an access road put in for this? Like?
So I don't have a pointer.
Off a Sedgwick or any of that?
The only way to get to it is if you drove south, if you can follow, um, Josie's cursor. You travel south on Sydney, uh, down to that intersection there and travel east along that road and then north. Uh, as you go north, that split where you see the aerial in between those two polygons, that is a public right of way. That, that is the only access to the properties.
Okay. So there's not any plan to put one off of like Sedgwick Road?
Not at this time, no. In fact, that, that would, uh, require some coordination with the property owners to the north and they, they would have to essentially create a right of way or grant an easement. And given the improvements that exist there now, that's, that's pretty unlikely that, that will occur.
So if only, you said you've heard from four people?
That's my recollection, yes.
If, so if the majority, if, so let's say you only hear from the four and the rest don't, does that mean that it can go through anyway, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to double check.
If, if the council ultimately adopts it, obviously.
I would just, because we'll have the public hearing next week, but the other thing I thought of is what you were alluding to a little bit in that, and that is access to it. And that's one of the reasons why I asked where the boundary was, because I think there would need to be a, if they were to try and develop that commercially, there would need to be a coordinated effort between the county and the city because the city boundaries do not go down to Dogwood. So I believe that, um, if the residents are supportive of this, I could definitely be supporting.
If, uh, when it goes to the public hearing, will you also notify the people on Dogwood Road too? Or does it notification just goes to that neighborhood?
We will, we will provide, um, we will provide notice, uh, within 300 feet of any affected property.
I, um, I also mostly lean toward how the property owners feel. I will note that the rezoning of commercial, commercial zoned lands to residential has created a shortage of commercial, uh, available land in communities, probably including this community. So I have a few more reservations than probably my fellow commissioners. And at the public hearing, um, or before it, I'll try to ask questions related to that. Um, this is commercial property that while might be difficult to develop is adjacent to State Route 16 and well located. Um, but again, it's, it's abandoned. It's difficult to get to currently, but I, I don't know that that means we shouldn't have commercial and industrial opportunity next to State Route 16.
Being of this, this community is only accessed currently is off of Dogwood, off of, uh, Sydney. I would imagine that, uh, the opportunity for development would be kind of limited as it was. We've, we've seen recently, um, a Cedric landing area, a lot of development has come up in that, although a lot of it has been residential. There's also, uh, been several businesses that have popped up, but, um, of course, while I always delineate to the, to the residents there and what their desires on it are, uh, I, I, I don't see the, 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 this being commercially or used anyway in a commercial sense, any, at least in the near future.
Any comments?
No.
Nope. Okay. Okay. So we have a, a motion and a second. To, uh, move it forward for public hearing in March. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hey. Uh, let her be. Oh, nice. Let her be. Discussion on LR 23 Code Amendment, uh, 01 Development Agreement and Sign Code. Jim?
Good evening, Jim Fisk, senior planner. The city of Port Orchard's current sign regulations, uh, does not provide a workable standard for large sites with multiple pads and tenants served by private internal circulation roads. Our current sign code currently refers to a master sign permit, which allows, uh, a development to allocate signage throughout the site, but the process does not allow for increases in net signage based on the number of buildings that may front internal private access roads. What staff proposes is an amendment to the development agreement section so that where there are large, complex sites, we have the ability to approve a master sign plan through a development agreement to allow to, to allow additional flexibility as part of incentives for obtaining other public improvements that may be necessary. Currently, the development agreement section is one of the few chapters in Title 20 that is not one of the items that is able to be amended by a development agreement. It is relatively simple ordinance to add the sign chapter to the list of chapters that can be amended and the development standards that may be amended through a development agreement. Doing so may have a significant impact on the city's ability to negotiate with the developer to end up with the best possible outcome to provide a public benefit. Tonight, we're not asking for any action, but we do ask the planning commission to review the materials provided in your packet. Staff intends to schedule a public hearing regarding the proposed amendment for the March 7th planning commission meeting.
Again, to initiate the discussion, I would make a motion for the planning commission to approve moving this to, um, for a public hearing in March meeting.
I'll second that.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a, a real general question on it. And that is, when you do a master, um, development agreement with a developer or a a development and, and you put the signs in there, will that also include any external to the, to the project marketing signs?
By marketing signs, you mean like?
I mean, like the D R Horton sign that sits at the end of salmon or at the end of very late.
I mean, really in a development agreement, you can build all sorts of terms to that agreement that, that could potentially be one. I'm not certain that, um, outside of any temporary signage that, that would be absolutely necessary, but I mean, certainly that, that could be considered, I suppose.
And then just another point, do we know when that temporary signage, um, is going to come back to us?
We are currently building a record. Um, we've spent the last two, three months, um, on a very specific day, uh, of every month, um, about every two weeks, we're out taking photos of the same spots. Um, during the winter, what became pretty apparent to me, uh, was that, uh, in fact, temporary signage was not necessarily the biggest offender, rather it was, um, it's like sandwich board signs, a board signs. Um, those do require a permit and so there's, there's some action that could be taken. The task that, that we are undertaking is actually photographing the temporary signage in the right of way. Um, and then after, um, well, since the beginning of the year, I suppose that there's been an increase in, in the amount of signage. So we're still kind of building that record, um, and then we'll bring it back probably, uh, sometime in the spring.
So that'll be a totally independent action from this and temporary signage would not be part of a development agreement.
Correct.
Okay.
I like your leading questions.
Pardon?
I like the leading question. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor for development agreement and sign code. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Item C, discussion on the housing action plan.
I didn't even see that.
Can everybody see this? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, Jim Fisk, senior planner. Um, on January 10th, the city's, uh, housing action plan consultant makers architecture provided a presentation of the city council regarding the Port, um, Port Orchard's existing conditions report. Due to the language in the contract, uh, we could not have the consultant provide the same presentation to the planning commission. Uh, so I, I will do my best to highlight all of, uh, the topics, um, addressed that evening. Some of the commission's members attended, uh, that city council meeting were able to hear in detail the findings of the report. And tonight, again, we'll highlight some of the more important findings of the existing conditions report. Since the July kickoff, staff and the consultant has worked on, uh, community engagement, including stakeholder meetings and a community survey, which staff has periodically updated the commission on. Also, since the kickoff, the consultant has researched basic background information on the city's housing status and demographic information and presented it in the existing conditions report included in tonight's packet. It's important to note that some of the feedback received from the city council has been included in this draft, uh, but some is still outstanding. The existing conditions report is the first deliverable of this project, but it is not in its final form as, as the consultant is still researching local information related to housing need. And employment information is directed by, uh, council. We anticipate receiving the final existing conditions report by the mid-month and do not anticipate significant changes from what is before you tonight. As far as the adoption schedule is concerned, we're on track to adopt the housing action play, pardon me, action plan in May. Uh, the Department of Commerce grant awarded to the city requires the adoption of, uh, the housing action plan by the end of June. So we are a bit ahead of schedule. The actual draft plan should be delivered to the city for initial review by the beginning of March. And staff intends to provide the draft plan to the commission for review at the earliest planning commission meeting possible. So that, that may end up in the March planning commission packet. Pardon me. Some of the priorities for the project, uh, that have informed the work and approach are similar to those shared during the kickoff meeting. And through, uh, community engagement and stakeholder interviews. These, these priorities were, uh, reaffirmed during that process. Housing action plans can focus on a variety of issues. These items are the priorities based on what's been heard from the community. Addressing housing diversity has become a key goal with Port Orchard, perhaps one of the fastest growing, if not the fastest growing community in Washington. Port Orchard is seeing a lot of new construction, but still perhaps not enough diversity as the market and new residents may desire in terms of housing types and price points. In your packet, um, is the first deliverable for the project. Pardon me, I gotta get down on my notes here. That's too far. Need a mouse. Uh, in your packet is the first deliverable for the project, the existing conditions and housing needs analysis report. This provide, this provides a lot of background information on housing costs, uh, demographics, affordability, construction trends and has observations on regulations and planning policies. There's a lot to unpack, uh, so we'll attempt to highlight the most important pieces. And let's stay on this slide. Uh, some of, some of the baseline findings, uh, presented in the existing conditions report will inform the recommendations in the housing action plan. At about 4% annually, Port Orchard's population is growing faster than the, the county and the state, partially due to annexations over the past 20 years, but also due to high demand. The orange line in this graph depicts the growth, uh, rate over the past 50 to 60 years. And as you can see, the growth rate has declined slightly over the past decade or so, but we believe this is attributable to the annexations which occurred beginning around 2010.
Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
You said, um, sorry to interrupt you. I just want to ask, you said, uh, because of demand, demand for what?
Housing.
Is it because it's more affordable here?
That is one of the indicators, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Mm-hmm. The Washington State's Office of Financial Management estimated that our population in 2020 was 15,587 people, which has since increased to 16,400 in 2022. The rightmost bar on this graph indicates target population for 2044 with an increase of 10,500 new residents. Demographically, Port Orchard is more diverse than Kitsap County as a whole. There's a larger share of Hispanic residents, almost twice as much as the county, uh, as twice as much as a county wide average. Port Orchard has a younger population than, uh, regional and state averages. This statistic is, has implications for various considerations around housing type, family size, potential for household formation by younger residents and more internal population growth from that, as well as the need for a variety of different price points for housing. 69% of the households are families with 11% being one-person households over 65. The plan does take into consideration the specific housing needs and income considerations of seniors. 40% of households are renters, which is higher than the county and statewide averages. This has implications for housing instability and less control over housing price. The graphic on this slide, uh, shows the relationship between household size and housing unit size. There's often a mismatch of these two things and we're seeing that here in Port Orchard as well. Uh, this mismatch shows demand for smaller units. The median household income in Port Orchard is $71,719. Household incomes are higher for ownership of households. Something interesting that you can see in this graph is that renter incomes have not changed a lot over the last decade compared to, uh, ownership households. The change in rate of increase of rent or income to homeowner income also has implication for its relationship with the rise in housing prices. Additionally, 40%, 46% of residents in Port Orchard are earning less than 80% of the HUD median family income, which is the number that the federal government uses to determine eligibility for subsidized housing. As mentioned before, uh, there is a greater, uh, housing diversity than the county, particularly with apartments. 63% of housing units are single-family detached units compared to 70% countywide. With the boom in population and construction in West Port Orchard near McCormick Woods, there's been a lot of housing growth. The housing stock in Port Orchard is newer with 57% of housing being built, uh, since 1990 compared to 40% countywide. Another way of looking at this data is through, uh, housing production by permits.
Can I, can we go back this slide?
Sure.
Okay. 63% of our housing units are single-family residents and the housing stock recently constructed. Do we know, because I know there's been a lot of single-family residents, but I also know that we have, have a lot of multifamily being built currently. Um, do we have a, do we know how that will influence the, those percentages? I mean, well, that 63% go down because of all of our multifamily units.
It, it may. So as, as we go through this process, we're continually updating the statistics. And so by the time we get to adoption, um, that number may increase or decrease. Uh, but I, I don't think it would be a significant difference.
Okay.
Uh, housing production, um, okay. So another way of looking at this data is through housing production by permits. As you can see by the graph, housing permit data shows a significant increase in housing production over, uh, over the past decade. Additionally, you can see an increase in multifamily development permits in recent years there at, at the right. Um, this graph shows data for housing development in, uh, the development pipeline. Our housing permits currently in for permitting. Nearly 5,200 units are expected to be completed in the coming years, doubling, uh, Port Orchard's housing inventory. Based on this data, uh, diverse, diversity of housing products remains low with the majority of development being either single-family or, uh, large apartment projects. So that, that's, uh, brings us to the middle missing. Here are some examples of the housing units associated with the housing production data. The data shows larger numbers of permitted housing and, and part of the work is looking at what housing is resulting, uh, in, on the ground. Uh, there are two, uh, different project spotlights, the first being middle housing of the development, uh, in the two to eight unit range. First is the Valley Quadplex or Fourplex Development that was recently constructed on Mitchell Avenue near South Kitsap High School and developed by a local company. The design is good, uh, though with conversations had with the developer. The developer indicated the high construction costs and some of the regulatory hurdles may have resulted in higher rents than he would have liked. Then again, these are all three bedroom units, so the rents are probably in line with the rest of Kitsap, uh, at around $2,500 a month. Picture to the right is an unofficial conceptual drawing of development in the Forman Village area. Uh, it's an entire subdivision for Uh, it's an entire subdivision proposal of small and detached housing. Uh, they, uh, being McCormick are potentially going to maximize opportunities of the McCormick Village overlay district for the site and create new homes with ADUs built in, uh, smaller scale apartment buildings and cottage clusters all along a small commercial center. We also want to highlight some mixed use, uh, mixed use projects, particularly in downtown. Uh, the Bay Street Apartments, which is permitted, would be the first project of its kind in downtown with three floors of apartments, a small commercial space and one level of structured parking. The picture to the right is the Ramsey, which is located on the corner of Cedric and Ramsey, that has ninety-nine apartments, structured parking and a drive-through coffee stand. The Ramsey is planning to use the multifamily tax exemption program. Together, the, the mixed-use projects that, uh, are on the way may be signaling a shift in the local real estate market. It's only once land values and rents reach a certain point where structured parking and taller buildings like, like these become possible and, and with it, you can start to achieve more of the goals outlined in the comp plan, such as compact, walkable and mixed-use neighborhoods and centers.
Kim, could I ask, where is the Bay Street Apartments, uh, going to, where's the proposed location of that?
Uh, it's at, uh, the Lighthouse, uh, Cheers.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
That one is going, like, for sure now?
They have, uh, permitted, I think the developer is still working with the previous property owner regarding some environmental cleanup on the site. Um, I'm, I'm not sure what the status is of that. We did extend their, their shoreline permits. Um, so that they, they could begin construction once they're ready.
Oh, that's nice.
The next couple of slides address the housing market and housing costs in Port Orchard. This graph shows the vacancy rate, which has been falling overall currently around three and a half percent. This vacancy rate is how easy it is to find a place to live. There are several types of vacancy rates mentioned in the plan, uh, that take seasonal homes into consideration, but the rate shown on the slide here is vacancy rates of available on-market housing. Three and a half percent is lower than the optimal range for vacancy. The, uh, the ideal number is, is higher and around six to eight percent.
Can you say that again? Sorry.
The, the ideal rate's around six to eight percent for vacancy.
Okay.
Corresponding with the demand and low vacancy rates, uh, housing costs have been rising. The chart on the slide shows the relationship between housing costs and income. You can see that the median income is shown in yellow, which has been slowly rising. Median rent is shown in, in blue and median home values are shown in green. The data in this graph, uh, goes to twenty twenty. Uh, but should note that as of twenty twenty-two, the average home value is around uh, five hundred and eleven thousand six hundred dollars and the average rents are, uh, right around sixteen hundred dollars. There's roughly a five percent increase in ownership units and a nine percent increase in rent over the past decade. Rents and home values have been rising faster than income since, uh, twenty seventeen. This chart is pulled from the report and, yeah, it can be a bit challenging, uh, to look at, but it's a useful way to visualize residents' ability to purchase housing in Port Orchard. The bottom line, uh, depicts the median household income and the top line shows medium, median house prices. There are various income brackets represented by the different bars. The median household income for Port Orchard is around seventy-one thousand dollars. And someone earning significantly more than that at a hundred thousand dollars could still not afford the median Port Orchard home price of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, even though they are earning nearly thirty thousand dollars more than the median household income. This further highlights the gap of income to housing. There are some assumptions considered in this calculation, such as a twenty percent down payment and current interest rates, which are constantly changing and, and can make home buying, uh, home buying more, more difficult. And again, this graph is, is just another way to visualize the relationship between housing costs and income. Housing cost burden. The technical definition by HUD considers households spending more than a third of their income, thirty percent of their income on housing cost burdened. Those spending more than half of their income would be considered severely cost burdened. As you can see from this graph, the left axis being income brackets and the, and the lower you go on the chart, the lower the household income. Uh, you can see these households are spending more of their income on housing costs. More than half the households earning under eighty, uh, under eighty percent of the average median income are cost burdened to some degree. And the majority of the lowest income households in Port Orchard earning less than thirty percent of the median income are spending nearly half of their income on housing costs. These are households that could benefit from subsidized housing and, and the data shows a need for subsidized housing for the lowest income households. The latest targets from the Washington Department of Commerce indicates five thousand two hundred ninety-one new housing units are necessary in Port Orchard to accommodate the expected population growth. This graph shows a breakdown of the same income brackets and how many, how, how many housing units are needed in those income brackets. It's a fairly even distribution, but you can see that around eleven hundred units are needed for the lowest income bracket and around thirteen hundred units are needed for the highest income bracket. The need is fairly mixed across the income brackets with a wide variety of price points needed based on the expected population growth in the next twenty years. Regarding an audit of Port Orchard's development regulations, the city is not a home builder and cannot directly control the housing market, but the city does influence the housing market through zoning regulations, design standards, subdivision regulations and the like. Uh, the consultant reviewed our development standards to identify barriers to producing the types of housing that the comp plan calls for and followed up on some of the input received, uh, through stakeholder interviews and outreach efforts. Uh, the report details this pretty thoroughly, but, um, in summary, the key takeaways that will inform the actual housing action plan are that the city has a good foundation of supportive zoning standards to allow and encourage a variety of housing types. Uh, in the recent revisions, uh, that you all saw, uh, to the ADU chapter in twenty twenty-two, removed an owner occupancy requirement as, uh, uh, that, that removed a barrier to ADU development. A, a lack of minimum density standards does not incentivize developers to maximize the use of the land. This allows large lots, single-family dwellings that produce larger profit for the developer. This seems to be the default in a lot of cases with the current zoning setup. Uh, residential development allowances are located in multiple chapters in the municipal code, which, pardon me, may create some confusion for the code users, especially, uh, smaller companies. Complicated lot dimension standards using Port Orchard's unique form-based code system that, that sets different lot sizes dependent on the building type you have, street access or alley access. Uh, and it may be a bit overwhelming to smaller developers. For middle housing, the consultant noted the, the minimum site size about half an acre for cottage housing and minimum site size for townhouses. And the way those regulations are set up that, that they may discourage those types of housing. The community engagement report, which is part two of the report, was not provided in the packet because the, the housing survey was initially left open until January twentieth. Uh, so the information was incomplete at the time of delivery of, of this report. Uh, we decided to leave the survey open until February third in hope of additional exposure through the, the comprehensive plan periodic update kickoff open house held January thirty-first. Um, the consultant is still gathering that data associated with the survey and then, uh, who will include, they, pardon me, they will include, uh, that in the engagement report upon delivery of the final existing conditions report. Staff has provided updates, uh, to the planning commission at previous meetings and have not seen any significant, significant changes in the types of responses, uh, previously elicited. Uh, fourteen individuals participated in the stakeholder interviews, uh, with a mix of in-person and remote meetings. Stakeholders included city council, the mayor, uh, housing producers in the community. The goal was to get a range of pers- perspectives from policymakers and developers working on housing projects from small projects to much larger projects. First, generally, uh, they, they were asked, uh, people were asked, uh, what they think of Port Orchard, why they think Port Orchard is growing so fast. And the, the common theme to those answers was that, uh, was the area's natural beauty and relatively low prices compared to places like Seattle and King County, where many people may be moving from. Uh, telecommuting seems like it's here to stay. Uh, the local military presence is also pretty stable and reliable and is a reliable demand for housing. But we, we, the consultant, uh, heard, um, as more diverse people move here in different stages of life, they're also looking for options and sizes of housing that has traditionally been, uh, that, than what has traditionally been available in Port Orchard, for example. Seniors who want to live independently and want to live on a single level or a larger family that wants to buy a duplex and stay together. Townhomes for young couples who don't want to pay the cost of maintenance of a big yard. Uh, as noted earlier, there's some variations popping up, but it doesn't seem to be enough to meet demand. Middle housing could be built, uh, with some code simplification, regulatory updates and updated permitting process. There's a strong link between housing growth and infrastructure needs. And there's frequent interest in seeing more housing downtown. Now, while homeless service capacity is limited, there is interest in more supportive housing like shelters, uh, single-room occupancies and group living. So we've received quite a bit of data in the survey, which was advertised through utility bills and through cities, uh, online postings, Facebook's, uh, emails, things of that nature. These are all preliminary takeaways, uh, but shaping up to be the key themes. Uh, about one-third of the survey takers are cost burdened. Renters are strongly interested in moving to single-family homes and homeowners are somewhat interested in a variety of ownership housing types like townhouses, cottage, uh, cottages, et cetera. Renters are generally more open to zoning updates to provide a variety of housing. Uh, the most important locational feature of housing is being in a neighborhood safe for walking and bicycling. A lack of daycare and some types of medical services were identified as related, uh, cost and quality of life issues. We received one hundred thirty-six survey responses, uh, through January thirtieth. Uh, our hope was to receive at least a hundred and fifty responses before the survey ended, um, on February third. And we're waiting those final numbers from our consultant. We extended the survey to leverage any exposure of the comp plan open house may have provided. Also, uh, the winners of the gift cards have not yet been identified, so if you participated in the survey, uh, you may still end up with a gift card in your pocket. We have survey takers to tell us their housing story or, or things they like, why they moved to the city, how they found housing, how the cost of housing might be affecting their personal lives or, or that of, uh, their family. Uh, we'll provide a full copy of everyone's housing stories and encourage you that, uh, to read them, but, uh, there are some anonymous snippets we received. Renters mentioned the challenge of being first-time homebuyers and finding well-paying jobs. Homeowners mentioned being lucky to find their, uh, to find and buy their homes when they did. And a few people who say they are business owners mentioned it is difficult to find employees who can live nearby. So with that, again, here's our remaining schedule after today. And we're hoping to have city council adopt, uh, the housing action plan, which obviously you will see uh, before goes to council, uh, but we're looking to adopt that, uh, sometime in May.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. So why is it? Why is it that we have so many new apartments? That places like Gig Harbor, they're building homes. So what is, is, it doesn't? And this is kind of, doesn't that create, doesn't that keep us in a low, lower income bracket or area? And not that it's a bad thing to have all the apartments, but I feel like we're not, um, in the higher. But, yeah, that's a good way to put it. I, I just don't understand why we have all these apartments, but you drive by like Gig Harbor and they have homes going in everywhere.
So there, there's, well, there's all sorts of things that kind of impact that. Um, so our development regulations, they are the implementing tools that we use for the comprehensive plan that was adopted in twenty sixteen. Um, we adopted a form-based code, uh, which makes building those types of developments, uh, a bit easier. But in addition to that, um, Port Orchard is kind of a unique in that, uh, access to Seattle. Um, it's a very short, um, ferry ride over there. And people can relocate from Seattle to Port Orchard and pay significantly less for housing. So their dollar goes much further and they just trade it for a fairly short commute. Um, and again, the comprehensive plan kind of outlines the development that the city wanted to see when they adopted it, and that's compact urban walkable neighborhoods. And so all of these things kind of go together and, 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 uh, if, if there is a zoning in place in the adopted zoning map, people can develop those things. And, and so there's also some federal things and I don't really want to get into that because I'm not super familiar with it. Um, but, uh, there's some, there's some tax benefits, um, that people have in those opportunity zones, so they can develop things like that and, and, uh, we have tax exemption, the multifamily tax exemption where you can get an eight or twelve-year tax exemption, uh, to build that type of thing.
The builders?
That is for, yeah, essentially the developer and, and the property owner after that. But there's, in the twelve-year exemption, there is a, uh, a housing affordability component. Um, and then the eight years really incentivizes that kind of denser development. And, you know, that, that all provides housing that is needed for people, like, pretty much identified in this report. Um, but also too, it, it is, uh, a financial benefit, uh, to the city. And I, I think I've used this example several times, but if you have a cul-de-sac street that is, oh, I don't know, two hundred feet long and it serves, uh, let's just say twenty houses. There are pipes in the ground, there's asphalt on the ground, and there are a lot of city utilities that the city is then obligated to maintain because it, in perpetuity for the public. If you think about a denser development, you can, um, put a lot more residents in much smaller place and, and maximize the use of that infrastructure. Therefore, we, by default reduces the cost burden on the city to maintain that infrastructure. So there's, there's all sorts of things that, that go into it. Gig Harbor, I think that their development regulations, well, I'm, I'm gonna pause there. I don't, I don't want to speak to that, but certainly our development regulations are set up in such a way to, to promote, um, some middle missing housing, which we haven't really seen. Um, because again, it's, it's privately driven, but we are giving people the tools to create this type of housing. And, and we're kind of seeing that a little bit here and there.
My input on it and kind of answer your question from my point of view is over the last, however many years, you know, a bunch of years, um, we have had either lots being built, small lots, because our lots are small now with the water and sewer availability. And developers are putting three thousand thirty-five hundred square foot homes on this. They are maximizing the lot. So we're seeing a lot of those homes being built as opposed to the fifteen hundred square foot Rambler that was popular when I first bought a home. Okay, and I think a lot of those larger homes, those single-family residents are being built where you don't see them all the time. And the multifamily, the larger ones, they're not small, like the one fourplex we saw, that's an anomaly. There are not many of those going in. Most of them are large and multifamily, and those are all in our transportation corridors. And so they're more visible to us. And I think that's why we see them and focus on them more than the bigger homes that are being built out. And I think that's why we see them and focus on them more than the bigger homes that are being built out. But there's a definite need for what they call the middle, the missing middle in, you know, homes. There just is. We did a, um, took a tour of the Haven, the new apartment building, um, on Sydney, um, out there, um, by Gilchrist Chevrolet. Okay, we, and, and those, those two bedrooms are renting for over two thousand dollars a month, you know? And that's a lot more than some of the mortgage payments that people who have bought a while ago. So there's really a disconnect. When we looked at the income numbers and you saw that to buy the medium in a priced home, our people would need to earn thirty percent more than they are now to even be able to afford that. But that is not unique to Port Orchard. We don't want to look at that and think Port Orchard has to change something because I believe that is countywide, statewide, maybe even nationwide. I, I don't think that that disparity is unique to us. Uh, Mike, I have two particular concerns, which I mentioned at the, um, open house for the comp plan. And when we decide how we're going to deal with this missing middle and come up with a housing action plan, it's important to me that we don't fragment our community more with, um, thinking of West Port Orchard on the other side of sixteen and East Port Orchard on the east side of sixteen and making, um, another side of the tracks type of situation. I think our community should be more homogeneous than that. Uh, and I realize on the east side of sixteen, you're going to see more infill development than you are on the west side where there's more vacant lots to put in. My other concern, or not concern, but just caution that I feel when we come up with this plan is that we don't, that we don't create what I call planned slums and that we put all of the lower income in one area. I think it should be dispersed throughout our boundaries. Those, those are my, um, my talking points on it.
Well, just to sort of piggyback off of that a little bit, I, I noticed on, uh, page forty of the Housing Action Plan, which would be sixty-four in the packet, it does briefly mention, uh, people facing homelessness in Kitsap County. Uh, but it even admits to its own admission here, um, quote, "The count encompass encompasses both sheltered and unsheltered people and is conducted during one twenty-four hour period each year. Therefore, the number is generally considered to be an undercount of the true population experiencing homelessness," end quote. Um, and I think that, that identifies something important in the sense of, um, what we already see as a larger, uh, demand for, for a lower income and probably, uh, larger denser, uh, density of housing, uh, being so large. It's, it's probably even larger than we, you know, might previously think about it. Um, also considering the fact that maybe some of these, uh, homes that are occupied by, by multiple different people rather than one single family, but multiple families. If that, uh, availability of lower income housing were to be made available, you would see more people occupying it. So basically more, more availability would reach more demand, uh, which isn't a bad thing, obviously. It means that more people are being lifted out of situations of, of homelessness. So just, you know, wanted to identify that in particular, that, that's, it's the availability while already being large is, is still probably an undercount.
So I think, I think one thing that's kind of concerning is, so I've lived here a really long time and it's always been, you know, a community town and, and things of that nature. And, and Jim, you just said two things. You said, one, that the builders are benefiting because they're getting a tax break. And two, the city benefits because they don't have to put the amount of, um, money into the infrastructure and maintain it. I think when you, when you build and you allow on, on something like that, that kind of takes away the, um, community. And, and I, I hope that's not where we continue down this path, that it, it isn't about the builder that builds it and goes away. You know, he makes his money and, and goes away or she, um, and the city. And I understand things are expensive, but I don't, I don't like that that is put out that way. I think that, I think we're losing community and I think that, um, having all these apartments, these are people that are here and then they're gone. And like you say, the people from Seattle are coming over here to live. But they're not really invested in their town. They're here because it's, it's cheaper for them to live here than Seattle, but yet it isn't cheap enough to get our housing or our homeless off the streets. I don't know too many people that can afford two thousand dollars a month for rent. And so I, I don't know, there's just something that, that's not making sense here.
And I would just like to, to point out, um, that when I, when I said that about the tax exemption and then I, I mentioned the cost to the city as far as infrastructure. Those were two separate and distinct points that they are, they are exclusive of one another, meaning that the tax exemption incentivizes that type of building to be constructed. And then the second point was when you have denser development, that reduces the financial burden on the city to maintain the infrastructure associated with development. But not that those two things go hand in hand.
Right. And I get that, but, but they both play a part in, in, in our future developments. And, um, and I appreciate you saying that. I mean, that's, that's, that's a pretty honest statement of, of what the reality is. And, um, I don't know, it's, it's just, it's, it just doesn't feel right. There's just, I don't know. I think our community is, is lacking with that community spirit again. And even going back or to, you know, futures of bonds and levies with this, with the school district. If you don't build that community, you don't have people invested in, in what you need, you know? And, and you need a, you need a strong city and you need a strong school district for people to come here and.
Let's sort of piggyback off of that a little bit, if I may. Um, so generally with Port Orchard, what I've seen, and I've also lived here my entire life, um, is due to, of course, Seattle and its proximity and the Navy base and its proximity. You do have a lot of that come and go of, of residents who, especially the military, who would get redeployed and then they, they leave. Um, my grandmother, she, she came here in the late seventies because she was in the Navy and she was, was stationed here and then retired here and then settled down here. So while you see a lot of that come and go, I think you also see a lot who are staying, certainly, either through no fault of their own or because they just love the area so much. Um, but as, as well, uh, looking at the, 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 the kind of housing that already exists here in Port Orchard that has existed for a long time, being that mostly single family detached housing units. Now that we've seen more and more construction of, of apartments, it says here, for example, on page, uh, twenty-seven, when regarding the Haven Apartments, that the higher rents are also partly due to the high construction costs that are need to be recouped. And so I think that generally, uh, because as, as Beck pointed out with, um, rents of a lot of these apartments or, or even more than some mortgages are, um, that, um, generally we're seeing a lot more developments, of recent development of new apartment housing coming up. While a lot of these single family detached homes are, are older houses that have already been here for a while. So that could also factor into it. I'm no, uh, no expert on the matter, but I, I would imagine that as these buildings, uh, sort of age and as the, you know, the, the market becomes less niche and more saturated with more of the, uh, you know, apartments, townhomes, you know, et cetera, that those housing costs would come down. Uh, but I, I do feel your concern about, um, the, the, the community being less centralized.
I have, I have two things. The first thing I'm going to say is we would like to see townhomes, but we're not. Townhomes are not being built and that's part of the missing middle. But I would really like to hear from Commissioner Morrison, who, um, is very involved in economic development and how you see the housing situation in Port Orchard.
Uh, hi, everybody. Um, I'm, I'm pretty passionate about people having places to live and, um, and I think it's to Port Orchard's credit that we have stepped up to incentivize dense, increased density in our community. I think that many of us in Kitsap are uncomfortable with growth and, and, right? That's why we live west of the water to some extent. And this is happening throughout Kitsap. I would say that growth is coming, uh, most likely whether you want it or not. And so thinking about the community that you want to build as we update the comprehensive plan and thinking about how we can incentivize this sort of density so people can have places to live. Um, you know, some of our rents are competing with Seattle rents. And that's, that's a real issue for the people who live in this community. So I, I empathize with both sides of it. Um, it's interesting when I look at the twenty-year outlook and it's, I think we're adding ten thousand people over twenty years. To me, strangely, that doesn't seem like a lot. And, and it feels like it could or should be more even. Um, because this is, this is a real issue and maybe it'll correct, I don't know. But, um, I just think we need a lot more housing in both Port Orchard and in Kitsap in general, like here, period. And, um, that missing middle, I don't know. I, I really empathize with, um, what Commissioner Ash, Ashley said when she started talking about her first home, which was a Rambler. My first home was seven hundred twenty square feet. I bought it for about a hundred fifty thousand dollars and it helped me get on the property ladder and build wealth. And I'm super passionate about that, super passionate about the people in this community being able to do things like that. So sorry for the long ramble. Um, thanks to, uh, the consultants who put together this amazing report that I have nerded out on while sitting here. Um, and thanks to our planning staff in Port Orchard who are stepping up to the challenge to, um, provide housing. And, and I understand and agree, um, Commissioner Bailey, I think it is. I, I feel the tension of a, a small, sweet community that's growing, but we've, we've got to have places to, to put folks.
Uh, one more thing, if, if you don't mind. I, I've also wanted to, to sort of piggyback off of what he was saying with, uh, how just detailed this report is. I was able to dig through it in a few days that I, that I had it and it is very detailed. And it's good that we're taking into consideration these things, uh, that perhaps, you know, in years past would, would have been put by the wayside. Uh, to sort of change the note a little bit, I see six forty Bay Street, uh, and they were talking about, uh, see right here. Oh, good Lord, it's there somewhere. Right there, uh, six forty Bay Street, uh, which is basically where that's, um, it's like right next to Dude's Donuts, that sort of lot, I'm assuming, right off of Franklin, right there. Uh, it said, uh, city was, uh, it was a city-owned property that was intended to be sold to a private developer, though the project has been on hold for at least four years. Uh, could you give me a little insight on what that's about?
Well, there used to be a restaurant there.
There used to be a bank there.
Uh, the city acquired that property, um, and has been looking for somebody to develop it. Uh, there was an interested party. As far as the agreement to purchase that property, I, I don't think that they could quite make their proposal pencil. And so they, they've kind of stepped away from that and are rethinking things. And so I think that, uh, that property is still one that could be eligible for redevelopment.
Okay. So is that was, is the, the, the project that's briefly described here, is that, was that part of the previous, uh, a plan that just couldn't get through? Or is that, because it described a little bit about what the building would be, uh, specifically forty-four units on five levels, twelve thousand square feet.
Yeah, I, I think there were some, the issues that came up, um, on the developer side that, uh, that just did not make it feasible at that time. So that could change in the future though.
There was an emotion for this, right? No, I don't think we have to do anything with it. No, I don't think so.
No, really, this, this document is, is for your information. This is really what's going to drive, uh, the plan and the goals and policies that are, are developed there. That, and then that housing, well, the Housing Action Plan, it'll drive the goals and policies in that plan, which ultimately the, the Housing Action Plan will inform the housing element of the comprehensive plan during the periodic update.
So moving on to item D, that's a discussion for LR twenty-three, Plan Zero One, City of Port Orchard Stormwater and Watershed, Comprehensive Plan, twenty twenty-three.
So late Friday, I had sent a revised agenda, uh, so that item should not appear on the agenda tonight. Uh, but you can take that information that was included in the packet and review it. Um, I apologize for the late notice, um, but yet, uh, another, uh, delay in getting that in front of the planning commission.
So, go ahead.
So Jim, if I understand correctly, I shouldn't start in on this yet?
This, this one you, you can go ahead and look at, but there's no need for any, there's no need for any discussion or action on it tonight.
So then moving on to E, a discussion and the director's report.
So this is, uh, something new that occurred to us at the beginning of the year. And, and, um, I appreciate all of your patience, um, as I've stepped into this new role. And what we realized at the end of last year is that we did an awful lot of things. Um, and we never really updated the planning commission on what you all had done. And so I think going forward, our plan is to have a director's report at the end of every planning commission meeting so that you know what work you've done and its progress going forward. Um, and also too, you will know in the agenda, uh, that we have a naming convention now for the items. So, uh, I, I know that you, you read into the record those, just call them case file numbers, I guess, a little lack of a better term. But we wanted to let the public know, um, we, we wanted to be able to identify projects without some random name assigned to it, but actually give it something that's solid. So if somebody calls to, uh, the planning department, they can say, I have a question about whatever file number this is. And then you will know also too, um, in the staff report and in the agenda that we will now begin putting staff contacts. So if you all have any questions about any of the items on the agenda, you can call the person identified on the agenda or specifics to that project. So going forward, those are things that you will see, um, but the director's report. Uh, the cell tower development regulations, they were, uh, approved and codified. Uh, we have gotten several, um, cell tower permits in the last year that have gone through this process. Um, and it has made regulating the cell towers much easier because now we do have regulations. So thank you for your work on that. Uh, we did the twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan amendments. Those were adopted in June. Um, there were three of them last year, uh, one pertaining to tip. Uh, there's a part of the adoption of the parks plan into the parks element and one other. Uh, another thing we did was, uh, updated the municipal code definition for isolated wetland. Uh, we gave that, um, a definition that's really based on science instead of just some, um, random words. So now there's a way that we can actually establish what an isolated wetland is. Uh, we adopted stormwater code revisions, so both works is super happy about that, uh, that they have, uh, some tools to work with there. And as noted in, um, the, um, presentation for the Housing Action Plan, uh, city council adopted the accessory dwelling unit owner occupancy to remove the requirements uh, for owner occupancy with ADUs. Um, that is not, I think we have one, since that was adopted, we've had one accessory dwelling unit permit application come in the door. Um, but that has not yet been issued. Um, the accessory structure setbacks, as you may recall, the municipal code was devoid of any, well, portions of the municipal code were devoid of any, uh, accessory structure setbacks, which made it very difficult for staff and the public, for that matter, to locate those types of structures on lots. So that was adopted and, um, I've not heard any complaints about that. So, uh, housekeeping ordinance currently, uh, code publishing is putting those all together. They will soon be available online, but that was all adopted. So thank you. We cleaned up the code and took care of some typographical errors and, uh, some conflicts that existed in it. And that goes the same with the subdivision entry signage. We now have development standards so people can make their pretty sign in front of their subdivision. Uh, we adopted the public participation program for the twenty twenty-four. We adopted the public participation program for the 2024 comprehensive plan update, which outlined the engagement activities that we will take to try to get the community involved in the comp plan update, which should be wrapped up by the end of 2024. So we've got a lot of work, the commission will have a lot of work to do on that. And then the last item here is the comprehensive plan, 2024 periodic update. We had an open house on the 31st of January. And we had a council member attend and two of our planning commissioners attended. So we heard a presentation. And what we got back through that exercise is that we may need to kind of revisit our strategy for public outreach. We certainly would like to see a lot more participation than what we had.
Ju- just a thought. Sometimes you need to go to the people rather than inviting the people in. And so there may be opportunities for that. I'm thinking the farmer's market or I'm thinking maybe the McCormick's Homeowners Association. Or, I mean, there may be groups that we could go to rather than inviting them in.
And I, I agree with that completely. I think in this case, the kickoff, it's, it's really not a road show. Yeah, it's something that people need to come to.
I was just trying, how do we engage?
I, I agree with you. I think we can do a better job. In fact, Josie brought up the idea that, you know, based on, on the information, the demographic information that's in that, that existing conditions report in the Housing Action Plan, that maybe the flyers and things like that, that maybe we make them bilingual and include them in Spanish, that type of thing. So we're going to, we're going to make every effort to get more and more people involved. So if you all spread the word when we have these events, it would be greatly appreciated. And I think that is all for the director's report.
Did you say the park planning commissioners?
Pardon me?
Did you say the? Did you, when you were talking about the parks, did you say the parks? No, you were talking about, I don't even know what you were talking about, but I thought you said the parks planning commissioner.
No, the parks plan, the park, what is it, the pros plan? That was adopted by reference into the comprehensive plan as part of last year's amendments.
Thank you. Sorry. A lot of things.
So usually this, this, this end of the meeting report won't be this long, but we'll keep you up to date.
It was nice that you did that, though.
Yeah, it's cool to see what, what we've accomplished.
Yeah.
Do you prefer it all as one dump or would you like?
I think it's also nice to know what happened to it after it left this commission. That would be nice.
That follow-up.
You know, it also would be nice to know is that there's ever any public comment about the planning commission. I mean, do people appreciate what we do or know or they have negative things? I mean, just any kind of feedback, if there ever is any.
I've only heard good things, but nothing in writing.
This is my first meeting, just you wait.
By the way, I think we owe Commissioner Fontenot, how do we say your last name, sir?
Fontno.
Fontno. Welcome. It's so exciting that you're here. We're really thrilled to have you.
Glad to be here.
Okay, so we're on item F, discussion for the Open Public Meetings Act, OPMA and Public Records Act, ERA training.
So as new planning commissioners have been on boarded, we, as Jim and I have stepped into this position, have, you know, analyzed how we can be better. And so we have put together a checklist of information that is important for you guys to know and to reference throughout your term as a planning commissioner. And in addition, it came up that potentially some trainings may be required. Just they, they might have expired depending on how long you have been a planning commissioner or they may be required and you've never done them. So if you are interested in the checklist, just for your information, I'd be happy to share it with you in addition to if you believe that your training has not been done or if it is outdated, I'd be more than happy to connect you with Janine. And she can give you the links and the information on how to get that updated.
Sounds good. Yes, please. I'm, I'm pretty sure mine is long, long since expired.
Okay, I will, I will connect with Janine. I will get that emailed to you. And if you'd like, I'd share, I'll share that planning commission checklist with you as well.
Thank you.
And for me too, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Long time ago.
Paul is the guinea pig. He was the first to receive it. So thank you.
Have you opened it?
Uh, yes, yes, it was, it was incredibly dry government YouTube videos. It was amazing.
Dry but informative, right?
Absolutely.
Great. Happy to hear.
All right. So is that it? Anything else? We're going to adjourn this party, 7:19. All right. Yeah, thanks. Thank you for coming. Yeah, nice to meet you.
Hi, everybody.
Maybe next time you guys can come in person.
He's already gone. I guess let's answer that question.